Board meeting of the Wauwatosa School District to order with a moment of silent reflection, please. Roll call, please, Mrs. Galanti.
Mrs. Fee.
Here.
Mr. Deroz.
He is excused, he will be here later.
Mr. Croner.
Here.
Mr. Meyer.
Here.
Mrs. Milfeld.
Here.
Mrs. Randle.
Here.
I'll begin with a statement, please. Members of the Wauwatosa School Board value the input of students, parents, staff, and community members. The Board's regularly scheduled meetings provide an opportunity for opinions and concerns to be expressed publicly. The Board values all comments and will respectfully consider this input in decision-making. The Board requests that individuals limit their comment on each item to three minutes. Following any comment, an individual Board member may respond on the issue raised. However, it is not the intent of the public comment portion of the agenda for the Board to enter into a debate with member or members of the community. Because non-agenda items are not publicly posted in advance, no action will be taken on public comment regarding non-agenda items this evening. And if we can move on, may I have, excuse me, oh, that's right, thank you. Is there any public comment on non-agenda items? If you have, would you please come to the mic and give your name and address? Seeing none, may we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
That Sharon?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there any member of the Board that wishes to have a particular item pulled for separate discussion or action? Seeing none, Board members, do you have any comment at all on the consent agenda? Yes, Mary Jo.
I just was gonna ask Dr. Ertel if he could comment on the staff that we're losing, if it's related to funding.
I think there's a couple of resignations that I think salary amount has impacted their decisions. I'm sure there's other things along with it, but I know the amount that they are being paid in other districts, in some cases is more, and I know that plays into it.
Okay, thanks.
I'm glad you questioned, Mary, excuse me, Mary Jo. It's always painful to get this and see who we're losing because they're all valuable to the district, and I certainly wish them well, but I wish they were staying here. Is there any public comment on the non-agenda?
Excuse me, Mrs. Are you asking for comment on non-agenda or on the consent agenda?
Consent agenda.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Fee.
Yes.
Mr. Croner.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld.
Yes.
Mrs. Randle.
Yes.
Mrs. Weber.
Yes. We will move into our action items. Mr. Croner, would you, business services?
Thank you. It is recommended that the School Board approve the revisions to policy 6235 fund balance as discussed at the July 18 meeting, and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, is there any public comment or question? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Fee.
Yes.
Mr. Croner.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld.
Yes.
Mrs. Randle.
Yes.
Mrs. Weber.
Yes. In human resources, I'm going to ask Dr. Ertel, oh, excuse me, I think we'll have the motion read first, and then I'm going to ask Dr. Ertel to speak.
It is recommended that the School Board approve the administrative contract for Wauwatosa East High School Associate Principal Jean Hoffman, effective July 21, 2011, for 221 days per year at a salary of $77,000, and I so move.
Second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Michael. Dr. Ertel?
This is a hire that I guess we have, we have good news and we have bad news. We'll start with the bad news. The bad news is we're losing Jean Hoffman as a teacher of some of our English classes. But the good news is that we keep her as an employee of the district and as an assistant principal, and I think she's already shown as a dean of students last year at East High School and through her summer school work that she is a quality administrator, and she will continue teaching and making sure that carries on through a lot of different areas at East High School and throughout the district, and we're thrilled to have her as an assistant principal at East, and I'll ask Jean if you want to say anything, the floor is yours.
I just want to say thank you for this opportunity. I'm very excited to bring my energy to this new position. I've loved teaching, I have absolutely, you know, a love for the community, and to be able to serve in this new way is really a pleasure, so, thank you.
As Dr. Ertel said, we'll miss you in the classroom, and I hope you will feel comfortable stepping into the classroom and assisting when necessary, because I know the students will miss having you in the classroom too, even though you're going to be very visible, and I've watched you a little bit in summer school, and I've always admired your work, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, any further comment? Yes, Mary Jo.
I would say bad news is really bad news for the classroom, but obviously, the good news is better, so, congratulations, good luck.
Thank you. Mr. Hughes, did you want to make any comment with your new partner?
I was here more for moral support. I'm very excited to have Jean on staff, having worked with her for 10 years now at Wauwatosa East. I've never been disappointed in her work, and I know that will continue in her work as an associate principal, so, we may have lost out in the classroom, but she will help support our teachers and our entire school community, so, this is a great day for Tosa East. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Fee.
Yes.
Mr. Croner.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld.
Yes.
Mrs. Randle.
Yes.
Mrs. Weber.
Yes. I am sorry, I don't think I asked for community comment, and I need to do that. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to this item, even though we've taken the vote? Okay. I think we've duly installed you, Ms. Hoffman. Reports to the Board, student services, Ms. Krykowski?
Lisa, I have to ask you a question. Did your husband write a letter to the journal in the sports section yesterday?
Oh, gosh, no.
Oh.
That's a good letter. I would never let him do that, Mrs. Weber. Anyway, I'm here tonight to talk, to make a recommendation to our Board for revision to our policy 5112. It's the entrance age policy. There is a new state law that was passed and goes into effect this year that requires students to attend kindergarten before they're admitted into first grade, so the recommendations that I've suggested put us in compliance with that new state law. There are, we will need to develop some procedures for how we would, first of all, exempt a student from the requirement of senior kindergarten. The state statute, in addition to requiring that students attend 5K before first grade, has also, has also put in place some exemptions that each district is required to include, so we will adopt those exemptions in our administrative guidelines. And then we also need to put in place some procedures for parents to appeal the denial of an exemption, so those would be also included in the administrative guidelines. As a district, we believe obviously senior kindergarten is important experience for our students, we want them to attend senior kindergarten, so I think it's a good law, and, but we want to make sure that we're in compliance with the new state law. And I did look, last year, if you look at the students in Wauwatosa that entered first grade, we found one that we didn't have any evidence of a senior kindergarten experience. We didn't dig any deeper, just our data suggested that there wasn't any that we could come up with. I didn't call the family or ask them or anything, but every other student has attended SK, and this year, as far as our enrollment right now, every student who's enrolling in first grade has attended SK.
Board members' questions? Yes, Mr. Croner?
A couple. If a student was denied entrance to first grade for not having completed kind 5K, what would their options be?
It would be to go into 5K. So it would be a student, it would essentially mean that there could potentially be some students who would start, because the entrance age for first grade is six years old, we could have some six-year-old students entering 5K.
Okay, and for students that might take 5K at a daycare center or other places not in Wauwatosa, do those programs have to be pre-approved, or how will that be handled?
Those programs, as far as those, that would be considered a 5K experience, what we would expect from a student who didn't do a 5K in our district, some evidence of completion of a 5K program somewhere, whether it be a private school, an accredited daycare, senior kindergarten-type program, those kinds of things. We also, as part of our exemption policy, we're, it's my suggestion that we would have some language in there that, for a student that maybe hadn't had any kind of experience, to use our summer school program as an opportunity to get that 5K experience and have some, include in our administrative guidelines, some opportunities for them to enroll in our summer school to acquire that SK experience.
One last question. Could a student test out of 5K, say they were homeschooled and were coming in at the same knowledge level? Is that gonna be part of the guidelines?
And that's gonna be part of our procedure, our administrative guidelines as well, is that they would attend, in addition to attending summer school, that we'd do some map testing to assess the student. You can't be home, because the way that our state, because our mandatory age of school is six, you can't register with State Department of Public Instruction for senior kindergarten, and I checked into it, and right now, there is not any plan to change that. So the earliest you can officially be a registered homeschool student is first grade, you can't register for homeschool for senior kindergarten right now.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Mary Jo.
What might be a condition for exemption?
The state law requires districts to include the following two conditions. The first condition would be if the student would move in from a state that doesn't require senior kindergarten, that then, during that year of their senior kindergarten experience, that we would have to give them an exemption, or if the student moved in from out of state, from a state that requires senior kindergarten, but the student had earned an exemption, and there's evidence of that exemption. So the statute includes those two exceptions, and then, like I explained to Mr. Croner, what we're looking at is, you know, the opportunity that if a student hadn't attended SK, that they attend our summer school and do some map testing to show that they have comparable skills, because as a district, obviously, we value kindergarten and have a comprehensive kindergarten curriculum and feel it's important for kids to have that experience prior to entering first grade. Okay, thanks.
Further question? It doesn't change for four-year kindergarten, though, this just applies to five-year kindergarten, correct?
Correct. The law only requires that students attend senior, or five-year-old kindergarten, the law does not require four-year-old kindergarten at this point.
And what is the history? When did we first start? I know it's been a long time that we've had 5K in Wauwatosa, do you have any idea?
I think that we're one of the districts that has had junior kindergarten and senior kindergarten, and I think one of the longest districts in this area, I think we're pushing 40 years, from what I understand.
Sometime if you have a chance, it would be interesting to know, because I think it's something to be very proud of.
I think our junior kindergarten program is something that definitely, as a community, a lot of communities still don't offer that, and in communities where they're starting to offer it, it's very different. Our junior kindergarten program in Wauwatosa, I think, is one of the most established junior kindergarten programs in this area.
Thank you. Oh, let's see, is there any community comment on this, please? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Krykowski. Student learning, please. Mr. Zerewith, are you, oh, and Mr. Anderson, thank you.
Awesome.
For you?
For me.
As Jason's getting set up, I'll begin with some updates. Just a few things that we've been working on this summer. Jason and I, and the teachers at the Tosa School, the trades, have been working on creating a flexible schedule that allows for more flexibility between individual student needs, group needs, and then group activities and group learning with the trades. We've also been looking at our staff development focus for the 2011-12 school year, really looking at what are the competencies we want our students to be able to do after a nine-week block of instruction within the trades, so that's an area that we're going to look at. We're looking currently at registration materials going out, and that registration will happen for the Tosa School of Trades on the 23rd. We will have a open house in September, on September 22nd, at the Tosa School of Trades. Currently, our governance board is in the process of electing its officials, since we've went through a three-year cycle and starting another three-year cycle, and we've had some just preliminary discussions on continuing what the branding of Wauwatosa School, of the trades, in terms of moving forward, how we have those discussions with our schools, our community, how we get the word out, what the, what the whole purpose of what we're providing at Tosa School of Trades, so, we've had those ongoing discussions also this summer. So, without further ado, I'll interject with Jason.
Looking at highlights of this past school year, the 2010-12, 2010-11 school year, 12 out of our 13 students have graduated, four of them are currently applying for apprenticeships. Now, the problem with knowing where those students are going to go, the apprenticeships are so much more limited than they were about three or four years ago, whereas, for example, in the carpentry area, they might have accepted anywhere from 14, 20, 25, now they're accepting maybe two or three a year. So, we have a couple students who are applying each of the three trades, carpentry, plumbing, and electrical. Two out of those four students who are looking for the apprenticeships are currently working in the trades, and actually got a phone call from Alpine Plumbing last week looking for more trade school students. One of our students is working there, and they just love, they love him, and he's doing awesome, his work ethic, being able to think, and on his feet, and be able to come up with solutions without always asking questions, they just love him, and they want more of our students. Friday before the East and West graduation, back in June, we had our graduation here in this very boardroom, and we had over 70 family members and friends attend the celebration. We had, I believe it was 11, eight students who actually came to our ceremony, and it was, it was really an exciting experience, the first one we've had in our school. And one of the things that's kind of unique about our students, whenever one of the teachers or myself would leave our desk area, our chairs would disappear, because they're nice, comfortable chairs, very much similar to the ones you're sitting in, so when we had the opportunity to talk about each of the students individually, we had, we called them up one by one and had them sit at the board table, and it was really neat to see them in the big chairs and having all the wonderful words said about the students. Along with our wonderful celebration, we also are continuing new partnerships, Grunel Company, which focuses on electrical and plumbing, they also have some contracting with Carpentry. Hilti, who is a type of manufacturer that, I should say, is a distributor for some of the big trades, and then the Metropolitan Builders Association, we're continuing our partnership with them as the years go on. And this year, actually, one of our seniors who just graduated got a scholarship from the Metropolitan Builders Association. As the last two years gone by, this first picture that you see is, that was our first picture with the seniors who just graduated, and out of these 11 seniors, or 13 seniors who were in there, 11, 12 out of the 13 did graduate, a couple of them have transitioned out and a couple new ones have come in, so, that picture will always have a special, special place for the trade school. Here's a couple pictures of what the students did for the senior project, they built a 16 by 24 house, this is this preliminary, pictures of them working, again, continuing to work, and I'll go through these pictures fairly quickly so we can get to some of the other data that I want to show you. Side-by-side pictures of the walls going up, and then the one on the right, that's the completed carpentry portion of the house that the seniors that built. This is an electrical portion of the trades, and this is something that one of our seniors did, the picture on the left is the wall, and the one on the right is inside the box that's in the middle, so, and that was a student who went above and beyond, you know, we talked about differentiation and being able to hear instruction, this is one of our students who did a little bit beyond what all the other seniors did, and this is, the senior who actually did this is trying to get into an electrical apprenticeship as we speak. This is our junior project, they did half walls, and seeing some of the work, I think, if you've ever gone on a construction site, some of the stuff that our students have done looks a little bit better than what some of the professionals do, so they did, they had a lot of pride in what they did and did a great job. Here's one of our juniors, this is one of the juniors who actually did a presentation with me back, I believe, in October, and that's one of the projects he did, if you look, you have recessed lighting at the top, and then you have regular wall lighting on the side walls. Two of our seniors, along with one of our juniors, inside the senior house that they built, and again, you can see can lights at the top, and you can see lighting in all the different rooms. One of my favorite pictures of one of our seniors who just graduated, this is the young man who is working currently for Alpine Plumbing, who's doing an outstanding job. One of our partners that we created with Grunel Company, they have a lot of contacts throughout the community and areas that they do work in, and this is over at West Alice Memorial Hospital, looking at one of the chiller and boiler plants that they have there, so we were able to go on a field trip, the guy in the lower right, that is our electrical instructor, and the guy who's pointing up at the, one of the fixtures up in the ceiling, that is their master carpenter, electrician, plumber, he does everything there. If there's ever a problem, the electrical, anything electrical, anything plumbing goes out, he's the person who comes in and fixes it, so, we've had a lot of different opportunities to see situations like this, but this is just one that I wanted to give you a quick idea of what our students were faced with this year, as far as opportunities. And then this is not the best picture, but this is what our seniors looked like on the celebration day. As far as some of our data, looking at map data for our juniors this school year, 14% of our juniors increased their map score from fall to spring by seven or more points, 28% of them increased by one to six points, 14% stayed the same, and 28% of our students did decrease. Mathematics, 28% increased by seven or more, 14% increased by one to six points, 14 stayed the same, and 28 decreased. Looking at the tape test, very similar to the Accuplacer test, and that's a standardized test that they take if they want to go into an apprenticeship, so we had Big Step come in and do a practice test for our juniors, next year the juniors will take the Accuplacer. 28 and a half percent of our students scored at 12th grade, ninth month, or above grade level in the area of reading, 43% of them scored between seventh and eighth grade reading, and 28 and a half percent of them scored below sixth grade. Mathematics, 43% scored above 12th grade, at or above 12th grade, 14%, yeah, ninth grade, and 43% of them scored between seventh and eighth grade. And just to kind of give an indicator where the three major apprenticeships that we've been working with, or the trades that we've been working with, they want to see students right around the 10th grade level, as far as mathematics, which would be through geometry, and quite a few of our students are past that point, and we're working on still continuing to improve those who are above and bring up the ones who are not quite at that point yet. The Accuplacer, and this is the actual test for the seniors, I don't have a grade level, but numbers mean a little bit more in this test, five is typically where they want to see students as far as, as far as reading and mathematics, and you can see that the numbers, if you add up, 78% of our students have scored above a four, between seven and nine, nine, I believe, is maxing it out, 22% of our students scored between a seven and nine, 56% between a four and five, and 22% scored below a three. So, like I said, 78% were right around that mark that we wanted to be at. Mathematics, 33% of our students scored between eight and nine, and 89% of our students scored at least a five, so, we're almost at that point, according to the Accuplacer, of getting all our students to the point where they need to be to pass that, one of those screeners to get into an apprenticeship. The last bit of data that I have is academic data, looking at students' grade point averages, and the top portion is our 11th graders, looking at from their junior year, looking at from their, I'm sorry, their sophomore year through the first semester of, at the trade school, so from spring of 2010 through the fall of 2010, 71% of our students, I'm sorry that my timing is not right on the slideshow, 71% of the students' GPAs increased, looking at from first semester to trade school through the second semester, 43% of them increased, and looking at their cumulative grade point averages after being in the school for a full academic year, 71% of the students' cumulative grade point averages increased. Looking at the 12th grade data, 72% of the students' cumulative grade point averages increased from year one to year two, and looking at two full years, or two full academic years at the trade school, 55% of our students' cumulative grade point averages have increased. So there's just a little bit of the progress that the Tosa School of Trades had in year two of existence. So I will open up.
Board members' questions or comments? Yes, Ms.?
I'll see you.
Okay. Anne?
Thank you. First off, thank you for the presentation, and I'm glad that many of your students are having success. I do have a concern about some of the test scores you just showed us. Obviously, people come to your school with a wide variety of skill levels and backgrounds, but what I find concerning is that 28% decreased in map scores in both reading and mathematics. What's being done to address that, so that whatever level the students come in at, they don't move backwards?
One of the things for math, we've been doing a program called Alex, and that's not the full math program, or at least that won't be the full math program that students are taking, it's a supplement to bring the students from where they're at to where they need to be, as well as taking, you know, either a geometry or algebra two. For reading, we're doing several of the different interventions that we have, you know, at East and West, we're looking at, we have different teachers coming and working with our trade school teachers as far as different strategies. We had one of our teachers go to a couple conferences this past school year to work on literacy strategies, and looking at few students who didn't achieve the map growth, a few of those tests were invalid, and we, as far as the timing, some of the students just went, one of the students went through and clicked the information quicker than they should have, and we weren't able to go back and retest them because the window was so close to being closed, but we are doing some different things to work with the students who aren't meeting map growth or targeted growth. I look at all of our students we have at the trade school, and each of them, it's truly like an individualized learning plan for all of our students. We look at where they're at, where they're going, how we can get them there, and I think that's the advantage of having two experienced teachers there that are working very closely with them. We've identified a need with our guidance counselors to help out, and we identified one from each school versus having seven different counselors work with our two teachers. Now we have one from each school focusing on, so that way they learn a little bit more in-depth what the trade school is doing. We also have case managers from both East and West, specifically one from each of the schools to work with our students who do have IAPs. Again, knowing what our, what type of program we have, how they can support us a little bit differently, a little bit better, and those are some of the things that we're doing. And we look at our collaboration time on Wednesdays a little bit differently, looking at some of those students who are not meeting the mark, so we've started talking about quite a few things on how we can.
And that's part of the staff development that Mr. Anderson talked about earlier?
Yeah, and I just wanted to add, I think, for the teachers themselves too, I think for them, it was a, it was a eye-opening experience to say, wow, we really have some data here, and we have to do something, well, you know, we can't just let kids decrease, you know, go back, fall back. So we have had those discussions, we also talked a little bit about what it might look like for, you know, in the summer, our kids fall back, tend not to be involved, how can we get kids more connected? How can we get kids more connected with some more trade type of manuals and/or magazines or reading materials so that they would feel more comfortable and kind of continuing some reading? And so we wouldn't see some of that, that fallback in the fall. So we've had some of those initial discussions, but clearly we know that the staff development is going to focus on those students and tracking the data and looking at how we intervene so that we don't have that.
Okay, thank you. Because clearly that's just, it's a great concern if we have students who are falling back and I'm sure it's a concern to you as well. I just was curious as to what's being done to address that.
And also how are we supporting our teachers, looking at the data and coming up with proactive solutions so we don't get to that point? Looking at testing conditions and making sure that students are realizing that the value of what the map test can show us and help us with our instruction. Juniors have gone through that test probably ten times and it's, I don't want to say a struggle, but it's an opportunity for us to encourage more, for them to take it seriously. And I think the ones who did take it as serious as they could really showed tremendous growth and the other ones, we still need to work on as far as making it a meaningful assessment for them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tronner?
Thank you. I was at the graduation. It was a great deal of fun and the students were very proud to be here. I have a question about enrollments. How many seniors are there returning and how many new students are there?
We have twelve new students coming in. And I want to say we have eight returning seniors.
And what are your, or were your target numbers?
Roughly twenty per grade level. We, ideally, I wanted to see our incoming students at twenty. You know, I think looking at some of the things we started doing at the end of the school year, identifying students who have, you know, showed an interest or some of the skills in that area, really hitting the counselors, working with the parents more. Also reaching out to other school districts where we have contracted with our attorney to devise a contract with other school districts. So those are some of the pieces that we're looking at, trying to target more students. I think one of the things that we have found is if we don't have parents on board as far as this being a equally, if not, I hate to say better education for some of our students, that we're going to be at the same spot next year, talking about numbers, until we get parents on board. And I think that's a big piece that we need to do is get the parents on board and identifying, and that was one of the reasons why we looked at, how can their counselors help us more? You know, we do the plan test. That information is amazing as far as, when they do the world of work inventory, if we identify students in a particular area, they could target those students, having conversations with them ahead or right when you get that information back, reaching out to parents saying, hey, you know Johnny scored a six or seven? That's the targeted area on the world of work map, which means they have an interest in construction, they have an interest in engineering, manufacturing, design. This, the school of trades offers X, Y, or Z. It could help meet their needs and here's some potential avenues that they could take. So again, educating the parents about what the school can offer our students. I think that's, that's the biggest piece. We hired Alinia and worked with them, creating a case statement back in January and February of this past school year. That was useful, but that really targeted partners. Right now, we don't need the partners as bad as we need enrollment. And I think again, targeting the parents is absolutely what needs to happen. And that's something that we're working on. Jill and Neil, our teachers, are working on that as well, along with the counselors.
Yeah, I think as Mrs. Vee said, if you can, it's a challenging problem, but if you can get the progress up for all the students, I think it'd be a very popular program. Do you measure their, where they are in the spring before they come to school as juniors? And, but it'd be possible to have some kind of summer program to get some kids up to a certain level before they enroll?
We have, we have not looked at that in the past, but that's definitely something that, I mean, with all of our different offerings through summer school, I don't see why that's something we can't look at in the future. It's a great recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Sharon?
Can you tell me more about the contracts that you're devising with other school districts?
As far as-
I just thought you mentioned that?
Yeah.
And I was just curious about that.
We're looking at others, other area school districts that don't have a unique, unique school as the Tulsa district does and developing a contract for a seat if there are some available for, you know, incoming students. For an example, we have twelve right now for juniors. That means we, according to our contract, we would have enough for eight more seats. And then we would have a very similar process like we do right now as far as lottery. Let's say for an example, we have twelve applications or twelve potential contracts for eight seats. Then we would look at doing a lottery process for those open seats that we would have. And it would just be between the trade school and their, their home district. So that way, for an example, a student doesn't like the trade school, then they wouldn't be able to go to East or West. It would be the trade school. If that didn't work out, then they would be having to go back to the home base school.
That would be something that would have to be approved by the school board, which it's a sixty-six thirty agreement basically with another district if we were able to go down that route. And I think one of those things, excuse me, that came about from conversations. And Mr. Zerwick certainly knows that we have a lot of conversations about enrollment and there's, you know, that, that's the only way this program is going to survive with increased numbers. And to maintain it the way we're doing it right now with the numbers of students, it's going to be a real challenge beyond this year to be able to do that. So I think we've got to look creatively if we're, if we're sold on a program and how we can operate it. But I think there's some, there's some challenges that have to be overcome to build that enrollment.
Yes?
One question. So is the school not part of the open enrollment program then?
I think the, the problem with open enrollment is we, we couldn't be selective for the type of student to enter it because it would have to be a random process. We have six hundred and ninety applications for high school, open enrollment. So it would have to be a random process. If we said we had eight open seats, it would just come out of the lottery and it wouldn't be people necessarily that have any interest in going to a trades and I think it would be a disaster to go through the open enrollment process. You can go, if you contract with another district, that's a way around finding kids that do have interest. That would be another way to fill a seat in a different way.
So is it instrumentality of the district? It can't have its own separate application for open enrollment?
No, you had to apply to the district and then you, you can be placed. And the problem is if we place somebody, they would have rights to attend East or West if this didn't work out as well. And that wouldn't be what we would intend to do and I think there's, there's no real good way around that.
Thank you.
And the trades have expressed we want motivated students. You know, especially the members who are in our governance board. They have mentioned we want the motivated young adults who want to be at the school, not just because it's another avenue, something that's different than a traditional setting. And I think there's some ability behind that. We've had some students who come over to the trade school because they haven't had success in the traditional environment and they didn't have the motivation of wanting to be a, learn about the trades and kind of saw what you saw back at their home base schools, at the trade school. So we want to see the motivated young, young students who want to be at the trade school versus another environment.
Thanks.
May Joel?
Yeah, I'm reminded of the conversation we were having a few weeks ago regarding online learning. And sometimes it's what we don't know as far as, you know, what you can't find in the data. And that's finding individual kids who will fit here and who need this. And at the graduation ceremony, for instance, you know anecdotally from there that at least one or two of these kids probably would not have graduated from high school, according to their families. So, you know, it's critically important that we keep, keep getting these opportunities out there. And, you know, I totally agree, it's, we need to get the parents engaged and aware. But, but we can't give up on the kids that are out there that we don't know about yet because they are out there. And the people that I talk to who are already in the trades, you know, whose families have a business or something, they just can't believe that this opportunity is there. But, so, you know, keep, keep up marketing, whatever. You know, and I think as important as the test scores were, the fact that you have one individual working for a plumbing company and they're saying, we want more. You know, that's one person, but that's a huge beginning and that's where you obviously want to end up going with this. So, I, you know, from all the times I've visited and talking to the two really outstanding well, Tulsa teachers that are teaching the core curriculum, they're devoted, they know these kids. The kids, you know, who end up staying here are motivated. But it's just, you know, it's really, really important that we, we keep going. So, thank you.
Oh, I'm real pleased to hear the summer school mention because I would think that would be an excellent tool for enrichment for these young people that may be having some difficulties. And then do I, did I understand correctly? Didn't the trade school have something to do with the dugout that was built out on Brightlow Field?
Yes, they, some of my students designed the dugouts. We had a contractor come in very close to one of our teachers. Her husband, who owns a construction company, came in and helped produce the dugouts. And throughout the school day, some of our students went out there who were done with some of the coursework. And like I said in the past, we, our students were required twenty-five hours of community service at school year. And several of our students went out there and I think some of them even put ten-plus hour days and stayed till five or six at night out there, making sure that the foundation was set for the beams and went out there, helped put up choices and rafters and some cross braces and, yeah.
I think that's wonderful to give them that opportunity. They'd be so proud of that. And then is there any way that anyone can be a part or learn from some of our buildings and grounds people? For instance, we have a very fine electrician is one person I think of. And I know I don't know very, very much about buildings and grounds, but I do know that they do wonderful work. Is there any chance that they could get any help? Your students could get some help or training in, through the buildings and grounds department?
I think we might have to lean towards Mr. Mack on that one. I'm not, I'm not sure what the liability would be for that.
Okay.
You know, I think maybe as far as learning some of those pieces, I would imagine that would be a possibility. I, I know I've talked to a couple of the B and G guys before about, you know, if you're doing something around the area, stop by and see if any of our kids can shadow what you're doing. But I know they're very busy on a timeframe, but, you know, I think that's, that's a great idea for the future as well. I'll let Mr. Anderson work on that one.
In the summertime, I know that we take on a fair number of young people in buildings and grounds and they do wonderful work. Thank you for all that you've done to get this off the ground. And we commented about getting the word out. Board members need to help with that too. Whenever you can speak to what we have here because it isn't known out in the community. So anything that we can do, we need to step forward on that. Is there any community comment on this? Okay. Next item is district development plan.
Dr. Erdl, Anne, this is Erin Burger.
The, the district development plan, I'll just give a little bit of history about this report. For the past two years, we've put together a district development plan at the beginning of each year and we're currently working on the eleven, twelve plan. And basically what it is, it's our reading focus, our four district goals and then projects and initiatives that we're basically putting ourselves out there and saying, these are the things we're going to accomplish this year. And then the reporting out of it at the end of the year is something of a progress monitoring method to say whether or not we've, we've accomplished it. And this past year's district development plan and the report out is eighty-some pages, there's a lot of information there. A lot of it, a lot of the initiatives and projects have come before the board this past year and whether it's the Spanish program, the elaborate media program, the secondary scheduling we've discussed. So, and I think what we try to lay out in the report of the development plan is things we were successful with, things, things we made progress on and obviously some of them in there that we didn't make progress or we didn't get to that we said we were. But I think it's important that each year that we put this together and we report on how well we did. I think there's a couple of areas, when I just look at the four goals and certainly the, the reading focus and I think in the future, looking at grade level proficiency for reading and making sure all of our, our students are proficient. If that wasn't important, I don't think our state would be looking at that reading proficiency as well. But I think as a district of making sure we're measuring at each and every grade level. WKCE scores, I continue to be concerned about our growth in that area. There, we've had growth and it's somewhat random. We, we have gaps with our special education students. We have gap, gaps with our minority students. And it's something we continue to work on. And I guess we can talk about the WKC being a bad test and, you know, it's something that's going away, but it's what we use and it's what we're measured by and we're going to continue to have our focus on it. The map assessment is an area we have made growth as a district. Concerning to me though is some areas where we didn't improve in specific grade levels or specific content areas. But overall as a district, it's our third year in a row of improving in our map. I don't know percent of students that meet expected growth and with our target of, of eighty percent. Our ACT score, we did get to the point where we have all of our students. We are, we have fully instituted the plan, the explorer and the ACT and moving toward the ACT of a hundred percent of our students taking it. We did, we do not get the report on our composite score for the ACT until later this month, so that can't be reported out in this report, but will be included later. I think the, a large area of success is in our AP courses. The number of students that are taking AP courses, the number of offerings we have. And I think most telling is close to twenty percent of our, our high school students are taking an exam in AP this past year and that's up significantly from even a couple of years ago. But our number of students taking high-level courses and the rigor involved, I think, is, is critical. And we talk about college readiness and we need to have all students ready for college, regardless of where they choose to go. But I think those are some steps that, that have been taken. There's, like I said, there's a lot of information in here. There's going to be reports coming, whether it's at the end service, we'll be discussing more in depth at one of our next end services, but also at future board meetings, reports out of more data and more information. Certainly the work that John Shigal is doing is going to be helpful to us and will be shared with the board. But I put that out there and say, is there any specific areas the board would like to see more in relationship to the district development plan in the future that we can, we can get more in depth with later? Ms. Erin Burger? It is posted on the website.
Beth, is there anything additional you'd like to add before we entertain questions?
No, I would just say, um, no. I, I would just say that there, anything that's in the district development plan, the board has probably had some, these are things that the board has had presentations on or oftentimes some things that needed board approval. So these are things that it's well-known across the district that are important to us and, you know, that, that's what it's aligned to, so.
One other comment too, I do, do need to just publicly say thank you to Beth. She has, over the past two years, put a significant amount of time and effort and passion into making sure we're reporting out the work that has gone on in the district. And she really has kind of taken the lead in putting this together and making sure that we do have that accountability piece. And just thank you.
Are these, there's a lot of material here. Are these available to the public if they wish to peruse them?
It is on the website and if they would like a paper copy, they can stop into the district office and view one there or get a copy.
And if they come up with questions, they are welcome to call Beth at any, thank you.
Any one of us and we'd be happy to discuss it.
Board members' questions or comments? Yes, Sharon? Yes, Sharon?
Um, the second goal, which is the MAP assessments, we see a lot of commentary, at least when I read through the individual's, uh, school reports, I saw a lot of commentary related to that. But what I noticed was that the goals in the building reports were lower than the goal of the district and I'm wondering if you can comment on that? I was seeing a lot of 75%.
I don't think any of the goals are lower because those goals are reviewed. Um, maybe their actual performance might be, but we have extensive conversations with the building teams that set those goals to look at their grade levels, to see how, we might have a, they could have a grade level that's performing very high over time and a grade level that's not doing as well. And that, when you set the building goal, you don't, um, you don't want to set a goal that's too high because then it's not as meaningful and it needs to be realistic. So, I'm, I'm not aware that any are below that, so I'll, I'll have to, you know, is there anything in particular you could point out to me? I'm sorry, I'm just not.
That's okay. I, I just wanted to understand better why the buildings set the lower goals in that specific category and it's, you know, probably not a question you were expecting, but for example, on 23, page 23, Madison School, 70% of kindergarten through fifth will reach or exceed their expected growth target in reading as measured on the spring MAP. 70%, you know, so they're 70%, they're 75%. I mean, I realize, I think that we're building toward the goal, but I'm wondering if there's a disconnect between.
There's a difference between the building goal and a grade level. So, some grade levels may, they're looking at overall where they were at and probably the overall building wasn't at 70%, but there may have been grade levels that were higher than that. But then during, in professional learning communities, they set goals that are grade level goals as well. So, if some grade level was higher, their PLC goal would be to increase so that contributes to the overall school building goal. So, I, but I'll be glad to look at it and talk to you about it, um, to help explain it any further.
Well, I just want to make sure that we're moving forward.
So do I.
So, everything lines up and that's the difficult thing of cascading those goals from the top down. Michael?
Um, Mrs. Aaron Berger, I was understanding that the goals were specific to where people were starting from. So, so that the needle, the goal is to move the needle for everybody in the right direction. I'm just trying to understand why the building goals would be different. Well, if a given building had kids whose performance needle was lower than other buildings, my understanding of what you're doing was to tailor the goals of the building and to tailor the goals of the individual kids to where they were starting from for that year so that you could measure improvement. Is that kind of a?
That's correct. I mean, buildings are going to start in different places and so some buildings may, um, their kids may start out scoring much higher than, than another building, but we still expect growth. But the higher a school is scoring, the more difficult it is to get like large growth gains. And the lower a school's scoring, the more likely they are to get a larger growth gain. So, they do start in different places.
It, it, it wasn't that you have lower expectations for some places, it was that some of this is a way to measure improvement year over year and that's why some of the goal numbers for particular subsets will be lower than the overall number. And that when you roll them all up, that's the district accumulation.
Yeah, yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Anne, did you, okay. Phil?
If I could just continue what Mr. Meyer was talking about from our other questions. I thought, and perhaps you can correct me, when, uh, expected growth is as calculated for a student, isn't that the growth that it's, that that student should be able to achieve in that year, no matter where they start on the scale?
That's correct, an individual student, yes.
So, that in each building then, if we're asking 80% of the students meet their expected growth, each building should have it.
It becomes an average.
Same for all the buildings though, right? For all the students. Because each student, whether they're starting high on the RIT scale or low, should, each student should meet their expected growth.
Right, except, um, some buildings might only have 70% of their kids meeting the typical expected growth, while other buildings might have 50% and some might have 80, some might have 90% already. I, I don't, I can't say off the top of my head that any do, but, so they're still starting in different places as far as, um, if, um, okay, how many of our students met, met expected growth last year? So, now each year, we want to make continuous improvement and that means that we've got to get more students to meet their typical expected growth than we did the year before. Is that, and it's like an aver, it's like a building average.
I mean, you wouldn't expect students at the lower end of the RIT scales to have, be less successful in meeting their growth than students at the highest, is what I meant.
No, no, definitely not.
Um, I want to ask a couple of questions about reading. I'm pleased, first I want to say this is a very interesting and helpful report. I think I have a better snapshot of the whole district than I've ever had from reading through this whole thing. And as I was reading it, it occurred to me, it might be helpful to have similar kind of report every year, every other year maybe for extracurricular activities. Um, like sports, not necessarily one loss, but how, how, how is a sport affecting student athletes? Is it meeting its goals as student athletes? How is the theater program? How are the music programs? Can the people that run those programs go through the same kind of a self-evaluation process to give us a snapshot of that part of the district? Because this is very useful and if that would work out, I think it would be useful to have a snapshot of that part of the schooling as well. Um, I don't know if that's possible.
I'm just going to stay focused on academics.
Okay, but that, it just occurred to me that that might be helpful. Um, I wanted to focus on our main district focus, which is reading, um, because we had considerable amount of discussion last year when we added the grade level literacy. And I don't know if I misunderstood some of the scoring in here, but are any of the measures that we're using a measure of whether a student is at grade level? Or what are we using for grade level measurement of reading ability?
Well, we do use our MAP scores. Uh, MAP can be used as a grade level indicator. There are grade level, even though it's a growth, um, model, they do have, um, you know, RIT scores that, um, are like, what is a grade level score for a student at each grade level in the fall, the winter and the spring? So, we use those all the time. We use that to help universally screen so we can identify struggling math and reading students, um, right away at the beginning of the year. So, that's probably our best data right now. Our, the WKC hasn't provided us a lot of that kind of data because it's old by the time we get it. So, MAP is timely. So, we use MAP as our very first indicator and then we go to other assessments, especially in reading. We use, um, it's called a benchmark assessment at primary and we use a QRI at the beginning of the year to also be a follow-up diagnostic to what our MAP scores may be telling us.
But if, if our main goal is grade level literacy, do we need a different measure? If we're going to actually report how many students are at grade level at the beginning of the year versus the end of the year?
You, you, you could, um, certainly we have that data, you know? We do have that data and I liked that you called this a snapshot because that's a really good description. It's kind of a snapshot. A lot of times, there's so many things that, that are hard to put everything in here and it turns out to be a lot, but it's never everything. So, it really is a snapshot, but we certainly have that data available because we do use it all the time and we do look at who's at grade level and who's not. Um, it's just that this is what's aligned to our goals, so that's what we report.
Okay, well, maybe when the, the board has an end service on this, we could revisit the, that reading goal. If we were going to focus on grade level literacy, we need to have a measure of that and get a report at that, and maybe it's in the RIT scores.
That that could be something else we could include, yeah.
And my other question about reading was in, in one of the, in Initiative 11, it said that Dr. Erdl and you went around to the buildings looking at the reading program and met with the principals to summarize the progress of implementation of the new reading program. And I was just wondering if you could just give a general summary of where we are on that? Is the reading program being implemented well? Do we still have work to do? Is it, how do you feel where we are in that process?
We, um, we are continually monitoring that. We are doing that in several ways. It, uh, I, I feel that this year, we, the fidelity of our implementation is always a work in progress, but that we are not done working on that. Um, we are using our coaching model to help us, um, be like a dipstick to see what kind of fidelity we have at each grade level in buildings. That's what Dr. Erdl and I used when we went, went around and did our visits. We use that coaching model so that we would know what to look for, so we could have the conversation with the principal, um, be able to conference about what was happening in their building. We're trying to grow our principals so that they can, um, monitor the instructional fidelity of that program. We are also, um, so we're continuing on, we restructured reading specialists and we trained them last year in coaching so that we're getting people into classrooms to actually, um, uh, so that we actually know more than they're just turning a page and implementing a program, but that they're actually understanding what it is they're implementing at a deep level and are able to do that with their students. Uh, this year, we're going to take it a step further. We're going to add, um, the treasures implementation, the effectiveness to teacher evaluation so that as, um, teachers are observed this year, they'll be observing, um, not that a lot of them don't do that already, but we're just saying explicitly that the observation has to be a literacy lesson using our resources so that, um, principals are actually looking at that and then can come back as a team and talk about what they're seeing and learning. And then we also are looking at weekly assessment data from treasures at a principal level so that principals start to have a better understanding of what they should be looking for and monitoring with assessment. So, it's a work in progress and, um, it's not something that I see an end to. I just think that as we, um, but, but that we, we have to keep, you know, each year we need to stay focused on it if we really want to get an optimal implementation. So, we're, uh, we're still on the path and we place, um, a lot of emphasis and importance on the fidelity of the implementation and the work that we do with the teachers, the principals, you know, and, and Dr. Erdl and myself. Wanted to send that message when we went around and did those walkthroughs, that this is really important.
It, it seems like a strong program because the scores are beginning to, to go up, but can you generalize and say buildings or groups that have the fullest and most authentic implement, implementation are having the strongest success in reading scores? Or is that, you're not?
Um, I, I probably wouldn't be prepared to answer that tonight, but certainly in some of the discussions that we even have, the reading specialists, the feedback from even, um, we've had like little anecdotal things about, um, students no longer needing to check out like red books, which, you know, would be lower level readers, seeing a decrease in that. We've had reading specialists talk about how they have seen, um, really good growth, um, with struggling learners getting more, um, assistance because of, you know, what's built in. We've had just a lot of really good feedback that way that's anecdotal and there is some, it's too early to really say, we'll see. Um, with our WKCE, it's, this year might be the first year we can start to get a, a look at that because it's so behind the, um, implementation. But I do think there's some indicators there.
I think one of the indicators is we, I mean, we went, it was a snapshot again, the word snapshot, but a period of time, five to 10 minutes in each and every classroom, elementary classroom in the district. And as, as we went through, I think it was very clear and, you know, people always say, "Well, if it's planned and they know you're coming, it can be a dog and pony show." And my, my point is, that's fine. The, I, I don't care what it is, as long as they can show that they know what they're doing and can do it well with kids. And I, I think without, I mean, if I, if I can think of one or two classrooms that maybe struggled with the understanding of what they're supposed to do, but throughout the 200 and some classrooms, I think it was, that we went through, it was pretty clear they, there was consistency, they understood what they were to do. Again, snapshot, short period of time in each classroom, but you could tell throughout the buildings, when, when you left, when we'd walk out, out of the building, you'd say, "There's, there's a good understanding in a good sense, much more than I've ever seen with any kind of implementation." So, but I think Beth pointed out very well that it's, it's a work in progress, it's something we need to stay on top of and continue to push.
And I just want to emphasize that we're trying to work toward not focusing on compliance of, you know, moving teachers away from complying to really being able to use materials in their, in the student's best interest. So, and at the same time, being able to do that with some fidelity. So, we still expect buildings to meet students' needs and our buildings do look different and so how you use treasures in a building could look different because of who your students are, but that we still have the expectation that you effectively use the resources. And not because, uh, we said so, but because we know that, that there's research behind getting a result for students, if we can do that.
Yeah, I know since the scores end up everywhere, the implementation must be pretty complete and so it looks like it's going to be a strong program.
And, and teachers give us a lot of positive feedback too.
Okay, I'm going to shift topic just a little bit. Um, Initiative 12, where the district will begin review of grading practices in alignment with the research and best practices. Um, at the end of that, you're talking about using Dr. Guske and he's talking about why grade reform is needed. What is, in his view, what is meant just by the term grade reform? What are we looking at in that?
Dr. Guske's work is largely about, um, what goes into grading, what is the purpose of grading and then what are you saying that you're grading? So, he looks a lot at how, his research is heavily related to, we put things like how much of a grade has to do with attendance or has to do with homework, homework compliance, and how much of it has to do with whether or not you are proficient in the, in the skills or the content that's being measured. And that sometimes grades don't always reflect, um, what students are trying to learn because there's other things that, um, go into that grade. And he also stresses that, um, the formative part of grading, so that, um, grades, grades should never be used as punishment and that they should be, um, have enough information, like a grade needs to have explanation and comment or it needs to be aligned to benchmarks so that you can communicate what it is a child actually can do in relation to grade level and if not, what they need to do to be able to get there. So, that grades become more informative and, um, meaningful for the student that is trying to master the learning. So, you know, it's.
So, we'll be evaluating our grading system based on that information that he presented in his definitions of reform?
Yeah, it's not so much like, should we use an A, B, C, or D or proficiency? It doesn't matter what you use unless you really know what it is you're grading. So, our, our grades really need to reflect, you know, what it is students are learning and some of the extraneous stuff maybe needs to be reviewed and looked at, like homework is formative, so you shouldn't use homework as a way, homework should be something that students can do independently and should be using to learn from. And when you make it, you know, a sum, a summative assessment and put it into a grade, you now penalize students for practicing and trying to learn. And that the pur, the purpose of homework should be for them to have that opportunity to practice and maybe not be penalized by putting that into a grade.
Okay, thank you. And again, I really enjoyed reading this. I really, I really learned a lot about our district and I look forward to discussing some of these in more detail in the future.
Michael?
Once upon a time long ago, the smartest student in my junior high school, who was getting an A in English, decided he could tell off the teacher in front of the rest of the class during the last week in school. He lost his A. That might, that may have been a good thing. That was a good lesson to learn, so I hope in some respects, there is some room for those lessons to remain, that no matter how smart you are, no matter what your objective accomplishments are, if you disrupt the entire class for everyone else and challenge the authority of the school system, it will have a consequence on your performance.
And I could just say, Dr. Guske would say, "Yes, but maybe there's an achievement grade and then there's also a different grade that relates to like behavior or some of those other things." It doesn't mean you can't count them, it's just that, um, an achievement grade would really just reflect what you know and, or don't know in relation to what we expected you to. And that somewhere along the line, we have to reflect that accurately. Certainly, it forces us to consider that, yes, there are other things that could influence a student's performance, but it needs to be dealt with in relation to, if it's behavior, you know, with behavior, not in relation to a grade that's really about achievement. So, he would just suggest there are other ways to do, to get at those kind of things.
But as a board member, I don't think grades are just about achievement. I think they're about participation and allowing other students to learn as well. Just my thinking.
Yeah.
We have a lot of discussion to come on.
Please join us on August 30th for Dr. Guske's presentation.
You know, I, I think there's a lot. You know, I think there's a lot, and I guess, I don't want to get in-depth about the whole discussion about grading, but I, when we have students scoring fives on AP exams yet getting Ds and Fs because of homework completion or the concept of zeros and some of those kind of issues, something doesn't sit right. I also have the belief that, and it's not probably a widely held or popular belief, that if a student can take a final exam in algebra at the beginning of the class and can show they're proficient, that why would we have them go through it just to show that they can do it when they can show it at the beginning? So, and I think that's part of how we look at achievement grading. I don't think our expectations for behavior change. I mean, I shouldn't say I don't think, I know they don't.
Mary Jo?
Thank you very much, Mrs. Ehrenberger, for your work on this. It's so wide in scope. I mean, you, you've taken a broad look, you know, at initiatives, and then you've broken down results, and I think Mr. Kroner's right, it will be really interesting and helpful to look at it in more detail. But from a board perspective, I'm happy to see that things that have come to us for approval, additional AP courses, in some cases, you know, brought to you by teachers, foreign language program, increased ACT scores, summer school, Project Lead the Way, all of those things that the board has been able to be involved in by way of approving or getting, giving feedback or whatever, that's a good thing. And that leads to the question of what kind of supports are we going to continue with? And again, I'm going to go back to finances. Are we losing the ability to, for interventions or supports or anything like that because of funding? So, that's one thing I see as a board member is, you know, how do we, how do we support that? And are we going to be missing some things this year that we can't afford?
I can say this, that, no, we actually are trying to work wiser and use people more effectively. We are trying to use our resources to be more aligned with where student needs are at. We're looking at, you know, differences in what buildings' needs are and trying to say some, some buildings might need to address rigor, and some buildings are, need to address, have a larger majority of struggling students. The other good news in this, and I hate to say this because I hope it doesn't, there's no, yeah, but we do anticipate that we have not had a lot of ability to support, we have used our Title I money in the past to support struggling math students, and last year, we were able to service two schools, really two and a half, because one person was a halftime. And this year, we are getting a significant increase. We are planning to use that money to provide, to service all six schools that qualify for Title by providing some Title I math support, and that will be more support than we've been able to provide in the past. So, we've restructured our reading specialists so that they can be places where they need to be based on student population needs. We also restructure our literacy aids, do the same thing. We've talked about how we use people differently and what kind of staff development training they need. So, as of right now, we're trying to work smarter and more effectively so that we meet student needs. So, I think we're okay. I think we're in a good place.
And again, I'm appreciative of the things that have been brought to us by administration, the Montessori, all of the brand-new things that we're putting into place this year to reach everybody and keep on. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Is there any community comment on the superintendent's, excuse me, on the district development plan? Seeing none, is there any community comment that has not been brought to our attention this evening? If not, our new district calendar is just out, and I think we owe this a big thank you to Laura Wayne Scott. They're in the mail to all of our families, correct? Do you want to speak to it, please, Laura?
Sure. We were pleased that we got the calendar done on time with all the things going on with the scheduling. Big gratitude goes to a parent who is a graphic designer for the project, who is a parent at McKinley, Erin Fassbender. We had a photographer who helped us out, too, Sue Bleet, who is great, and all the staff members who helped me set up the photo shoots. I cannot say how much they helped me get this organized. And then, of course, Sherry Weinstock-Evans, who takes care of all the dates. So, it should be in the mail. I hope families, I don't know if they got them yet, I don't have a student in the school, so I don't know if they got there, so I hope they do.
You sent them, do you send them to retired teachers?
Yes.
Because I had a telephone call from one of our retired teachers. I wish you could hear it, it is a most beautiful compliment, how valuable this is and what a beautiful calendar it is.
Well, thank you.
He just was so praiseworthy of this, and I believe senior citizens get it.
Yes, and we.
And if they don't?
We have them at the library, the public library, we have them at Fisher Building, you can pick them up there. We will have them in all the schools once they open, they have extra copies there.
And how about the Hart Park?
And we send a box to the Hart Park Senior Center, too.
And if anyone doesn't receive it, they can always call it as.
Right, and let us know. But I do want to say it is a tribute to our partnerships. I think that's what makes Wawa Tosa so great, is we have these partners who are willing to work with us and support our students.
And I don't think we realize how widely used this calendar is, so thank you to each and every one.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. If there is no further business to come before us, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn the regular meeting and reconvene into executive session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight-five subsection one, subsection C, to discuss the superintendent's evaluation, and that is without the superintendent present this evening. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Michael? Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kroner. And may we have a roll call?
Mrs. V?
Yes.
Mr. Kroner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes, sorry.
Yes, let's take five minutes. Thank you.